Okay, y'all, I'm calling this March meeting of the Amsa Board of Trustees to order now at 6:42. So, let's review our agenda. I will say that we have Lucy Ferrante, who is participating remotely due to an emergency, and meeting is being video taped. Let's review the agenda. We will have our public comment, our faculty and parent rep updates, we have an executive director report, go through each of our task force updates, and then we will not have a governance meeting update, and was not able to make it tonight, and also the meeting had to be canceled due to the snowstorm. We'll go through the other committees, and then we will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation as well as strategies for negotiating with represented persons. Because doing so in open forum would be detrimental to our position, and we will not be reconvening in open session. So, any questions on the agenda?
I have a question. Would I, I would be there for the pending litigation part, but not ask.
Correct. All right, can we take a look at the minutes from last month?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes. Second?
Okay, all in favor? Motion asked.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. That's what I wanted to show.
Oh, it looks great, lovely.
Marnie?
That's public record now, pardon my joke.
I'm videotaping.
I no longer feel bad that I can't make any technology work.
I apologize for my cold, buddy. I wanted to attend today to give you a guys know, an update on how we're doing on the partnership between Amsa and GE Healthcare Life Sciences.
That's great.
So, to date, we've had, can, I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay, that's all. So, it's again, just an update on the partnership between Amsa and GE Healthcare Life Sciences. To date, we've had about two or three of the GE Healthcare employees attend some of Dr. Jurey and Mr. Ben Giovanni's classes to just, to provide them some information about what we're doing in life sciences and how it relates to what the kids are learning in class. And we're currently in the process of trying to set up a site visit to have about 40 students come over and visit us over at, at, at GE Life Sciences the week of the 15th of May. So, we tried to do that for the end of March, but didn't work out, given the shift in schedules because of the snow days, but hopefully it will work out for that third week in May to have some students come over and visit us. And when they come over, we planned to have them take a tour of all of our labs, as well as talk to them about different careers that are available for them in life sciences, and just give them an overview of product development that we do within GE Healthcare. So, I just wanted to provide that update to you, so that it is moving forward slowly, but we would also like to hear from some of the other department heads and the other teachers within Amsa of anything that we might be able to provide, maybe not within the life, within the sciences or the life sciences, but either, we have a lot of people who have interest in all subjects, and, because we call, we come from a very, very varied background. Everything from history and English majors to, you know, the science, mechanical, engineering majors. So, and a lot of people would like to, do enjoy interacting with the students. So, if any of the other departments, other teachers are interested in having some of us come over and talk with the students, we'd love to do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Faculty rep update?
Okay, there's not too much to update. The last few weeks since the last BOT meeting, school has been progressing. We have had actual classroom time, not just snow days. The atmosphere continues to be very positive. Teachers remain very enthusiastic about, about moving ahead to a new and better Amsa. There is a profound relaxation and sense of goodwill right now, and I think it's a singular time in Amsa's history where if we strike now, so to speak, in the next few months, we can perhaps build something that has lasting power. I continue talking to many different teachers in all the different buildings, as much as I can, and I know that many, many teachers who were far into the process of finding a new job, sometimes even a new career, have found themselves in the painful position of having to reevaluate something they had psychologically, psychologically steel themselves for. It's painful, but it's also rewarding. And again, I've been asked to, once again, and I get bored of this, thank the board for all it has done in the last few weeks, last six weeks, two months or so. And it, there's a real sense of gratitude, not always everyone's saying so, but when they talk to me, when they talk to each other, I see it. Just one announcement is that we have started the process of preparing for elections in early April for a new faculty rep. And right now, the faculty's received a, an email outlining what they would do if they're willing to be candidates and how the vote will run. And Sarah Snell will finalize that, but that should occur in, say, around April 11th to 12th or so, so by the next BOT meeting, I should be in position to announce who the new faculty rep will be. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, Liz?
Thank you. So, similar to Tom's update, I think that from a parent perspective, things are extremely positive as well. We had the ED coffee this morning, and I would say that the overall atmosphere was extremely positive, and I think that we may need to just switch to decaf only because it was a little, the, the room was abuzz, let's put it that way. I would say probably twice as many people at today's meetings than have been there in the past. There was a lot of question around Dr. Lewis's acting role, and obviously, I actually did get up and just let them know that it's, it's a combination of Dr. Lewis and the board deciding on when and if that changes from acting. And obviously, Dr. Lewis is a very accomplished teacher, and he may decide at some point to stay a teacher, and so I did explain that to the parents. So, that was something that did come up. There were a couple of other interesting things that came up that I thought the board should be aware of. The parents were interested in understanding how they can potentially help invest in the teachers' professional development. I think in the past years, they've actually been able to donate towards teacher development. And so, I didn't want to speak for the fundraising committee, but I do know that you've mentioned that donations can be directed specifically towards different things, so I wasn't sure if that might potentially be an avenue, so.
So, that's a finance issue, actually, so just to be clear, anybody can donate to Amsa at any time?
Yes.
And does not have to be when there's a campaign going on, but also that donations can be directed, and if they're directed, they're only used for that purpose, like for accounting purposes, we have to set it aside.
Perfect. I kind of thought that was the answer, but I didn't want to misspeak. So, another thing that we've been working on, I know, is the alumni. And what came up with the alumni is not only reaching out to the alumni, but also reaching out to the alumni parents, because they are very interested in continuing to be connected to Amsa, so that was very interesting. And that may be from a fundraising perspective, or it just may be from, you know, an overall, you know, connectivity with, with the school. In terms of some other items that were brought to my attention, there is still concern around class size, and I know, Dr. Lewis, I think you got a couple of questions on that. And I know there might not be a lot we can do for this year, but there were some comments around the fact that some students don't even have a seat to sit in during class. So, I'm not sure if that's something that we can be verifying and addressing as needed, but I just wanted to bring that up. And then, another thing, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with this issue, Dr. Lewis, in the past, we've had some issues with students who are attending Amsa and got into Amsa, even though they're out of town and don't have siblings. They're not part of the four core towns, I should say. That question came up again today, so I just want you to be aware of that. I know that it's been an ongoing issue with several people, and I'm not sure where, where it currently stands, so that was a question.
That's very specifically, of course, strong to know, the procedure that has to be gone through, and it is in the higher grades, and there just aren't people from the core towns, then the school can go to non-core towns.
Yes, but if, if there are new students in the lower grades, and they don't have a sibling, and they're not from the core town, one of the four core towns, then it's a question, correct? Still, yeah, so that was.
It depends on if they go through, you know.
Right, so that was the issue that came up. So, it's a, a middle school student where there's always been core town overage, so.
Well, so, just to be clear, non-core town students can be picked?
Yeah. Correct, with a sibling.
So, that's, that's right. So, no, 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 even without a sibling.
Oh, okay.
Without a sibling. So, you can, you can go into lottery, if you're a sibling, you go in, if you're a core town, you go in, but if you're a non-core town, you can still go into the lottery.
Right, but since we have a waiting list from the four core towns of hundreds, would you ever get to non-core towns, non-siblings?
In, in other grades, that could be.
Right, but I'm saying, I'm saying at the sixth and seventh grade level.
So, that would be for the registrar.
Yeah.
For the regi, the, the, the issue has never been whether a non-core town student could get in. There was a question about non-core town students being passed off as core town students.
And that, I think, is the question, yes.
Okay, so, so if there, if there is an issue of a student being accepted in as a core town applicant, and yet they're not, then that should be brought to the attention of the registrar.
Yes, and that's what I told the person, exactly.
Right, but if, but it, it is not, it's not unheard of for a non-core, non-sibling person to be brought in by the registrar. They pull, she pulls it off the list, I'm sure, in whatever order.
Right, but in the middle school, that would not be the case, because we've had a waiting list for the last three years of core town.
It depends on the grade, though. I mean, you know, if it's eighth grade, that's a much smaller waiting list, and people don't really want to pull their kids out of the school.
Right, right.
Am I right that there's a complicating factor in that there's a cap on the percentage, on the number of kids, say, we could take from Marlboro?
There is a cap. There's a district cap also. It's a district tuition cap on how many students we can take from any given town. So, it's no more than 9% in a given town, so we are darn near the cap from Marlboro.
But again, the registrar would be able to tell us whether we've reached that.
Okay, and we just wanted to get it on the record, and, and that parent knows that that's the next route that they need to go.
Well, so, so, so if, if someone, if someone thinks that there's something that has not been done right, then they bring it to the school, and then that's easily taken care of.
That's what I told them.
Right, Dr. Lewis can sit there. I just want people to understand that we do take in non-core town, non-sibling students, and just because, there, there was an issue of non-core, non-sibling being passed off as a, as a core town, but that is a separate issue that's, you know, we shouldn't be sitting there going, oh, jeez, this is a non-core, non-sibling, it must be something wrong.
Well, I think the concern was because they were a middle schooler. It was assumed to be a problem. Other than that, everything is very, very positive.
So, Liz, I want to thank you for those two notes on the, on the alumni and campaign, and actually, they're germane to my report, so.
Good, excellent. Great, okay, so we can move on to the ED update.
Hello, everybody. So, before I start, I have a couple of points, but before I say anything, I just want to thank Tom for all his hard work as the faculty representative. Tom is a full-time teacher, he's a fantastic teacher. He worked incredibly hard to gather feedback and input from all the teachers in our school. He went from building to building to building while also working as a full-time teacher and coming to all the board meetings. He did an absolutely fantastic job, so I'd like to thank him.
All the way through, Jim.
Yes. So, I, I have five points today. The first point has to do with some administrative changes that we've made. So, over the course of the past few weeks, as you've probably seen, we've made a few changes, and I'm really, really happy to announce that Ellen Lindsey, who is with us today, has accepted the position of principal. Ellen has so many fantastic qualities, and I know she's going to make an absolutely amazing principal. She is an incredibly hard worker. She was always, has always been, and I know always will be. At 7:30, she's out there, she's greeting the kids, she's wrestling with whatever problems the school encounters each and every morning. She has empathy, she has the respect of the entire community, teachers, faculty, staff, and what's also great about Ellen is that she knows a million things that I have no knowledge of, which is absolutely fantastic. She, she has a world of experience in guidance, she's got a lot of knowledge sped, so I think we balance each other out very well. And I'm also happy to say that working with Ellen will be the two former deans who have happily accepted the position of vice principal. They have worked very well together this year, and I know they're going to work really well together for the rest of the year. That's Ben Keeler, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, he's probably eating some really delicious hot dogs right now, and Mike Naraki, who's right over there. Both are going to be fantastic vice principals, and all three are going to be a terrific team. And working with that team also, I should, I would like to thank Lynn McCloskey, who is just a, she, in addition to being a wonderful person, she's just a fantastic can-do person who will help the entire team. Ms. Lindsey was going to come and just give a few comments and introduce herself, so. Everybody, welcome. Ms. Lindsey?
So, I was asked to spend just a couple of minutes tonight, just speaking from my heart, is what I was instructed to do. That's a dangerous thing to tell someone who has a background in counseling, so. I, I first, I want to thank Dr. Lewis for his faith that he has in me. The faith that I have in him certainly is equals or, or outweighs what he's expressed about me tonight. I'm grateful for this opportunity, and also to my two vice principals. I could not respect Mike Naraki more than I do. I'm grateful for their support, and really for being given the opportunity to, to give this a shot, right, to, to bring this school to the greatness that it deserves to be. I want to thank the, the staff, who really is the reason why I found myself in this position as a guidance counselor. I, I felt the pain that they felt during the meeting when we were all told that turnover happens, and I felt like someone had kicked me in the gut. And when the opportunity came to be able to be part of the administration and to be able to maybe be a bridge between our wonderful, wonderful teachers and, and the administration, I wanted to be the door that was open to them, and that maybe we would have a better chance of keeping some of our best teachers here at the school. And so, I appreciate their support, they've, they've been wonderful. I appreciate our parents, we have wonderful, wonderful parents. Being a parent of four myself, I appreciate their viewpoint. I want you to know that I don't take this opportunity or the faith that everyone has shown in me lightly, but I'm so grateful that possibly I'm in a position now to be able to really help Dr. Lewis turn things around and make this school one of the best in the state. I have no doubt about it, we're all committed, we have a wonderful leadership team, we work together, we're collaborative people, we care, we love, we are committed to these students, we're committed to our staff, and I just want everyone to stick with us, give us some time to get things settled. We will get these evaluations done, it does not scare me at all, we will proceed forth, and we will, we will conquer this, and I, just give us some time, and I think we're going to see that Amsa is going to be the community that it needs to be, that it has been in the past, and we're going to take it to a whole new height and a whole new level. We're going to start community meetings with our students, a time to celebrate them, to celebrate Amsa, to create community and spirit, to celebrate the arts, to give them an opportunity to showcase their talents. Our first meeting will be March 31st, we'll do another one for graduation, and we will celebrate our seniors in a way that they haven't been celebrated in years. So, thank you again for the opportunity, please let me know what I can do, if there's any feedback that you have, we will take that seriously, and, and we will move forward with whatever it is that the board decides is our priority. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. So, the second point has to do with the, the schedule. So, at the first board meeting, I stated that over the next few months, we have three really important goals that we all really want to focus on. Ms. Lindsey mentioned one, which is teacher retention, which is very, very important to us. The second thing has to do with improving the schedule, and the third is improving our PD program. Each of these goals is very much interrelated in the sense that a better schedule and a better PD program will help us retain our teachers. And as many of you know, this past year, the schedule was very, very difficult for our teachers. They had to go between buildings, some teachers would have three minutes to go from the lower school to the upper school, they would be teaching a seventh grade class in the lower school, and they would have three minutes to go to the upper school. And that's physically a very difficult process, and then when you're in front of seventh graders and the class ends, they don't really want to oftentimes let you go, they'll probably have 25 different questions. So, creating a better schedule is something that is a very, very important priority. And I'm really happy to say that we have just the people we need to do that, and the people we need to do that are a great team of teachers and administrators, and they have even created a nickname for themselves, and their nickname is the Scheduling Avengers. The leaders of the team are Padmaja Pandaru, Lino Alvarez, and Monica Benson. Padmaja is here, and Lino is in the back as well, I don't think Monica was able to make it today. They are the three leaders of this team, and assisting the team are Scott Jurey, Steve Smith, Jack Marshall, Peter Prue, Brian Bakula, and Dan Amaral. And I'm really happy to say, my, my goal is just to, as much as possible, get out of their way, because they just do amazing, amazing work. Just to tell you some of the things that they've already done, they have created a course request form, they've trained and assisted teachers in the submission of student course recommendations, they've helped assemble, revise, and post our online course catalog, they have opened up the student registration process, they will soon be assembling the course registration tallies, and they are going to be providing an initial report the week of March 27th. They have also set a goal of having a tentative skeleton of the schedule to present to department chairs on April 3rd. They have also been working with our principal, the, our facilities, department chairs, and teachers, to plan room allocations with the goal of minimizing and eliminating teacher travel between rooms. And in addition to all that, they've been working with our administrative team to best configure and optimize our enrollment process. So, I want to give a huge, enormous thank you, a big shout-out to the team. So, it's not just that they're doing incredible work and just going like gangbusters, but what they're doing is they're showing what we can do when we work together as a team. There is nothing we cannot do when we are working together, and they are showing that. The third point I have for today has to do with teacher retention and professional development, so my sense is, and I'm very happy to hear that Tom seconded this, is that we're off to a good start, and there's a greater sense of optimism, though there's certainly lots of work that needs to be done. We've been working, I have been working with our department chairs and with the board about some initial drafts of a PD program that we would like to expand upon, and with the goal of clearly demonstrating to teachers and to staff that Amsa is a place where they can grow, that Amsa is a place where they can enhance their teaching techniques, where they can learn new pedagogy, where they can learn about technology in the classroom, where they can learn new content. We want teachers to know that, we want to make that investment in them, so we are working hard to optimize our PD program. Fourth point has to do with outreach and communication. Communication is absolutely fundamental, and to build a better Amsa, we are going to need to better communicate, and we need to make it very clear that everybody's voice matters. Student's voice matters, teacher's voice matters, administrator's voice matters, and all of us. Hello? That's okay.
That explains what happened.
So, all of us need to listen, I need to listen, and to make sure that people feel respected and people feel heard. So, a few of the things that we're going to be doing, that I will be doing, is responding very promptly when concerns are raised, and we need concerns raised. We need people to speak freely, we need people to say, gee, this isn't working, okay, it's not working, let's try to figure out how we can make it work. We need, Tom, a while back, mentioned the, the goal of creating an Amsa mutual enlightenment, a place where we can be open, be critical, where we can say, hey, we made a mistake, okay, that's fine, let's fix it, let's come together and figure out what we need to do. So, responding promptly to concerns when they are raised, creating an environment where it is okay to raise concerns. It's not only okay, it's good, that's what you want. We'll also be expanding our Ed coffees and our Ed Advisory Council meetings, our first, as Liz mentioned, our first Ed coffee was today. It was great to see all the parents there, to see them enthusiastic and excited, and hopefully we can keep that rolling. Our next Ed coffee, if you weren't able to make the one today, our next Ed coffee is April 11th, so we would love to see you there. The next, I should say, the first Ed Advisory Council meeting is March 27th. So, and I'm really happy to say that Ms. Lindsey will be joining me for all of those, so we will be a united team. The coffees and the Ed council meetings, it will not be pre-scripted. The less I talk, the better, the more I listen, the better, and I really view the coffees and the Ed Advisory Council as places to give feedback, to hear what's working, to get ideas, so that we can do what we need to do to build a better Amsa. I'm also really happy to announce in I'm also really happy to announce, and everybody probably saw this yesterday, that we've created a special education task force. The announcement went out yesterday. Mrs. Lindsay is going to be leading that task force. Our special education directors will be on the task force, Erin Pasternak and Camilla Houston. The purpose of the task force is to reach out to the community, to figure out where we need to go. We have a strong sped department, but we want to figure out where we can go to create an absolute world-class sped department. So, the goal of the task force is going to be reach out to the community, talk to everybody involved, figure out what steps we need to take, what resources our sped department needs to get to that optimal place, to get to the point where we have, where we can say that we have the best possible sped department. So, there will be another announcement that comes out very soon with more details, dates, and information. And Ms. Lindsay, as I said, is going to be leading that. So, we will keep you posted. Last but not least, as everybody probably knows, I'm a history teacher at heart. So, I couldn't avoid ending with a quote from a few of my favorite presidents. So, forgive me for referencing history here. I think Ms. Murphy and Ms. Born will enjoy this, though. Becoming the executive director has been a personal, for me, it's been quite a change from my previous position. And it's quite a change for the school. I've been thinking a lot about, been trying to inspire myself. I've been thinking a lot about previous presidents and some of the periods that they went, difficult periods that our nation went through. And I've come back to two quotes that I think are appropriate for our community. So, the first quote comes from one of my favorite presidents, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, during his 1936 election. So, in 1936, America was in the midst of the Great Depression. Millions of people had lost jobs. Millions of people had given up hope. And in 1936, FDR gave a speech at the Democratic National Convention, and this is what he said. Governments can error. Presidents do make mistakes. But the immortal Dante tells us that divine justice weighs the sins of the cold-blooded and the sins of the warm-hearted in different scales. Better the occasional faults of a government that lives in a spirit of charity than the consistent omissions of a government frozen in the ice of its own indifference. At AMSA, we will not be indifferent to the needs of our teachers. We will not be indifferent to the needs of our parents. We will not be indifferent to the needs of our students. This I pledge to all of you. The second quote comes from another one of my favorite presidents, President.
That last part wasn't FDR.
No, that was me.
That was you.
So, the second quote comes from President Kennedy. And I'm sure all of you probably know this quote. We'll have a test after the board meeting today. In his inaugural address in 1961, John F. Kennedy stated, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." We are all in this together, and to build the AMSA that each and every one of us wants, every one of us will need to contribute. This is our school. This is our chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pauline.
Apparently, now we will all learn every board meeting as well.
I can't help myself. So, just so, so that, it's so.
You're really going to, you're really going to follow up on that?
No, no, no. It's so strong, it's so strong, a mature person.
I'm waiting until later.
So, I just want to, I want to, so, I want to take an opportunity to thank you, right? It's just, you know, the team that you've put together, the priorities that you've set, your authentic and transparent approach to how you operate with everybody is just, it's a game changer for the school. Everybody is feeling it, so thank you. And I just, I'm not, I don't want to embarrass you, but I, you know, I had a chance to see you in person last week, and we had this great moment as I arrived, which was, we were walking to your office, and your office was locked. And you didn't have a key to your office. I thought, what a great metaphor. You know? It really, it was just so beautiful. You couldn't have written that. And then we went in the office. If you've seen, all the furniture's gone. There's a table in the center of the office to sit down and eat. It's just, it's incredibly powerful stuff and fun to watch, by the way. So, thanks for everything you're doing.
Like he said.
What did he say?
Well, actually, there was another quote from a parent today. I didn't use it earlier, but since you brought up the quotes, I will. And what they said was, even if Dr. Lewis isn't teaching history, he's changing history for AMSA.
That's great.
So, I thought that was very well said, and it was from another parent, but I did steal it.
You didn't make that up?
No, I did not. I wish I was that clever.
If I could just say three words, this is leadership.
Yes.
Are you still teaching?
Yes.
Are there any other questions that people have for Dr. Lewis?
Lots of the board is.
All right. So, actually, as a follow-up, one of the things we have on here, we have a special education task force, and I actually talked about both of them today at the board level. Well, a couple of people, Allison chairs it, and then Roger Jarrett, who was on there, maybe is also part of that. And we have, I'm officially disbanding that task force at the board level. Roger will step in on the sped task force at the school level. So, that'll be your continuity, sort of to transition with what the task force at the board is doing, that we think that it is better handled at the school level at this point, and so that task force at the board level is going to reach out to Roger Jarrett.
Okay.
Strategic planning. We talked about strategic planning.
So, we met by phone, and the task that we walked away from our January meeting was, was to set up the next conversation, but primarily, it was first to consolidate the notes from our breakouts, which we did. We did take a look at the Statement of Principles document from 2014, and given everything that's been developing at the administrative level philosophically for the last several weeks, we are awaiting instructions.
Oh, okay. So, let me bring the rest of the board up just basically. I don't, I don't know if I did actually in my emails, but Chris and I and Rick talked with Marcy Cornell Feist after, to sort of set up our next planning session. We had, of course, put April 8th on the calendar for our next strategic planning session. And it's because we had talked about following up and continuing the work that we started at the January planning meeting. Marcy sort of took a step, you know, it's great to have a third party come in and say, well, with your change in leadership, why don't you go back to sort of the original plan, which is to solicit all of this input from the community? And so, at the board level, we talked about this and thought, this is a great idea. I talked to Dr. Lewis about this, and actually, they're going to take ownership of this for now and to help to drive this because what we want to do is, those questions that we started with at the board level, what, you know, what does it take to be wildly, what we all believe is wildly successful? What is the vision of what the school would look like? There's really a unique opportunity now to do this in a very collaborative way between the board and the administration and involve the entire community. And so, the April 8th meeting is off because we're not going to be able to do this in that timeframe. But the hope is sort of between now and the April meeting that we collaboratively could come up with some sort of plan for what we would actually do and how we could solicit input from all of our various stakeholders. Because I think we actually really want to hear from the entire community on this point.
Who's the "we" in that sentence?
Strategic, well, I guess I was thinking.
When you, I'm sorry, when you say how we could gather the input.
Yeah.
Who's the "we"? The board gather input?
Everybody. I mean, it's the board and the school together, right? They figure out how to actually get it, but it would all be, you know, a joint. It really is a joint effort, I think. But specifically, very specifically, I think it would be me, it'd be Chris, it'd be Dr. Lewis, and whoever he chooses to bring in.
Now, you say what I want, just to make sure it was joint, that the board and.
Right, right. Very clear, yeah.
It wasn't just the administration, it wasn't just the board, but it was a joint.
Right, it's joint. We need the administration to sort of come up with a sort of plan and strategy to see how that might work. But we'll figure out how to do this in a way that sort of rolls up with both of us.
So, we have a timeline for that? And I say that because there's a lot of things on the administration's plate between now and the end of the school year. Should we anticipate that this would take several months to do, and it might be fall before we're?
So, I think it'll take several months to do. I think that in a couple of weeks, we'll have more clarity as to whether we could get this done in this school year.
Yeah.
Or not.
Yeah.
I don't, I just don't think we're ready to say that yet.
No, and I.
In the scheme of priorities.
Given, yeah, exactly. And that's.
So, I mean, I'd love for it to happen, you know, in March, or in May, or June, but that's just such a busy time, so.
So, Pauline, I think that's great. And I think that the start that we got off to, my experience of the survey that we did from Board on Track was, and I'm very cynical about surveys, despite all the time we spent talking about them. But I had the experience doing that where I felt like I got to say what I had in mind. I was able to express myself through that survey, and the idea of using it more broadly through different constituencies, I think really will help people to get to a principal discussion of kind of what they feel is important, and in a way that can be shared and talked about and summarized. So, I think the tool is great. I would suggest one thing to think about when we get there is there's a, and if I'm going to be involved in it, I can, we can talk a little bit offline, but there's this thing called Big Democracy, which is a series of techniques for involving large numbers of people in decision-making. Most recently, the city of Boston did it with their transportation planning. So, it was Boston's transportation plan for the year 2023. And it was actually getting input from virtually everybody in the city, rich, poor, white, black, immigrant, native born, done through a series of meetings, of bus signs, of saying, give us your question, make you participate, and make us a gift of your question. And it was an amazing thing to watch, so I think we could learn something from. And if you Google Big Democracy Interaction Institute, you'll see what I mean.
Is Big Democracy the name of a, something that?
Big Democracy, it's a movement for inclusive community planning, which is generally intended for much larger scales than us. But there are techniques and practices, and maybe people, this is the local outfit that does this, that could be very helpful to us as we do that. I'd like some of that to be part of the campaign, too, when we get to that.
Oh, interesting. I mean, we talked about this with Marcy. Board on Track really focuses on things at a governance level, at the board level, and she, she could, she's not going to abandon us by any chance, but she felt that she would not be the best person to sort of help with this next initiative, if we do this in a much broader way. I mean, it's one thing for her to sort of facilitate a board retreat, but she had other suggestions as well, so.
The firm that did this cut their teeth in Northern Ireland in the 1970s. So, if they could do that, they could probably do AMSA.
Probably.
Oh, that's actually very interesting. So, we will be working on that jointly going forward. Okay. I don't know, actually, Ken, if you wanted to speak a few words on regional issues?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Dr. Lewis on the 8th, when Liz and I met with him, about the Regional Issues Task Force, and specifically about probably the biggest or probably most timely issue was around the new student orientation. And so, as you may recall, at the last meeting, I said that I needed to put together a list of issues, and that's something I still need to do, to hand over to him. But I did have the opportunity to talk about the orientation because in terms of the time coming up, that's obviously an issue. So, I'll leave it at that. Still a work in progress.
Okay, great. And then, Rick, I'm just asking you about climate, which really has to do with sort of the surveys going through.
So, I think maybe what we can do is, in terms of future surveys, I believe we had discussed that ideally, that's going to be part of the administration's responsibilities, and the board would be, have a role in terms of, as we make changes to the survey or existing survey, we get looped in. So, I think maybe we can have an offline discussion around what, the timing and so forth. And also, since the administration's transitioning, we can work together in terms of helping navigate through looking with Panorama and stuff, things like that.
I think in general, we look for surveys twice a year, in the beginning of the school, like October-ish, once after school's open, and then at end of the year, March, May, June. So, probably May is.
Yeah. And I think we probably want to think about it, especially, we don't want people to be surveyed out. So, if we're going to be doing the survey, but we're also going to be doing this other effort in terms of getting feedback from folks, you don't want fatigue.
People are going to get surveyed out because we're going to have more open communication. But the survey, we have to do, right?
We have to do it, but I just want to make sure we do it in such a way that people feel like, oh, I gave my answers here, and I don't participate as much there, or, you know, I just want to make sure that.
Or the timing of it.
Yeah.
So, isn't it better the administration not be involved in the survey, so teachers feel as free as possible to?
Yep. So, actually, the model would be, so we use Panorama in the past, and we've been for, I think it's almost two years now. And they are a third party. So, the results are, the survey is delivered by them and tallied by them. I think the question becomes, the administration helps to, so we have a baseline. The administration, at least last year, the idea was, they would give guidance or suggestions in terms of changing the questions, if we need to change any or tune them, so that it's a tool for the administration ultimately also. And then, board would be involved to make sure that if those questions are tuned or changed or altered, we aren't losing visibility as a collective group of stakeholders in terms of the climate, and also just general visibility on how things are going.
And the product is very tight in terms of confidentiality, so you don't see, so, you know, you wouldn't need to be concerned about seeing things that you shouldn't, and respondents don't need to be concerned about that.
There is no, and we've seen results, and you, too, you see things all in aggregate. And the other thing we do do is that people do, there is free-form responses. We make sure those aren't sent out. They get scrubbed before they get sent out, so there's nothing personally identifying.
So, the administration can see all the responses, but generally, there'll be a board member who helps to.
Redact.
Yeah, to redact. So, that by the time it's delivered for general consumption, you can see all the comments, but you can't see any identifying names or, you know, people's, teachers, if they mention them.
And also, once we post the results up on, let's say, the website or whatever, anybody could theoretically, any stakeholder can view the results, and they are, except for the redactions, the fundamental results are unaltered. So, there's, we have had concerns in the past that results or certain answers have been, not shade, shared, shared.
Rick, does that apply for both the faculty and the parent survey? Okay, thank you. Yeah, the board will see faculty and family survey results. In the past, I mean, on and off, the administration has chosen to do student surveys, that if you choose to, that that doesn't come to the board. Okay. Any other questions on? All right, we're skipping Governance Committee, so we'll meet Ed Committee.
So, we had our meeting on, our first meeting with Dr. Lewis on the 9th, and we had a good discussion on sort of next steps forward. One of the things that the Education Committee was working on is a framework for the board to use in sort of its governance responsibilities relative to academic program success and faithfulness to the charter. And this is along, this runs along the performance criteria for the charter school performance criteria. And so, I'm getting ready, I'm working on that and working towards having a product to. And so I'm getting ready, I'm working on that and working towards having a product to give to the Education Committee. One of the things I want to talk with you about is the possibility of setting up our report out to the board.
Okay.
Probably not till June, I think the committee felt as though with, sort of where we are in things, we're not ready, we probably still need a couple of months to go, so probably reporting out in, at the June board meeting. Finally, so no, one more thing, so April 6th is our next meeting. We welcome all participants. So, last month, Dr. Lewis, I talked about the uniform policy. Just wanting to make sure that we get clarity, particularly for new parents, new families that are coming in, making sure we're ready to communicate that out to them. I realize you have a zillion things on your plate, but the new year's going to creep up, and I just want to make sure that when people start asking questions what the uniform policy is, that we're ready to answer those, and then also have the resources in place, because they've got to go out and purchase uniforms and so forth. So if there's not going to be any change, great, then let's say that, but if there is going to be a change, then, you know, let's be prepared for that. I'm not advocating for one, I'm just advocating for clarity about whatever that is, so. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. We have Finance and Audit Committee. Lucy is going to be presenting.
So I am going to step in for Tom. I had it planned actually to put this up, but because I didn't, oh!
Oh, look at that!
Ooh, someone thought about this.
House and technology.
Okay.
Of course, someone can see it.
So...
Well, I can see it, but I don't know if anybody else can.
Well, you know, I thought the best way to actually run through this is to actually start at the bottom. And if you can show just the green section at the bottom, and then I'm going to work my way through.
I actually learned recently that on your iPhone, there's magnifying glass.
Yeah, there is, actually. And can you scroll to the right? Yes. Nope, I'm sorry, to the left then. Yep, okay. First, what I'd like to start off with is just to show that first column that shows the bottom line number there of 917,000. And let me just look in front of me, yep, 917,000. That is currently what we're forecasting our surplus to be for the school year 2016, 2017. Right next to that number is where we started the year. So at the beginning of the year, based on what we knew at that particular point in time, we were forecasting a deficit of about 250,000. So there's been a major shift there over the last nine months. If you scroll up to the top, I'm going to walk you through the reasons why. And then if anybody has any questions, we can go through them, and if I don't have the answers, we can table them for Tom, but hopefully I should be able to, to answer any of your questions. So at the top, income, tuition, that is the biggest change. We are now projecting additional tuition of about $500,000 for this school year. That is based on the report we got at the end of December 2016 of our student population, the districts that they are from, and the amount paid per student, per district. So this is a pretty significant change as compared to how the forecast was built at the beginning of the school year. There will be another review of the, of the student population, and I believe that comes out at the end of March. So if this one came out at the end of December, I would assume that there will be a readjustment to these financials in May to get to that final expected tuition for this school year. If you head down, miscellaneous income, we are projecting an increase there as well. That is based on a increased interest rate on the current cash balances that we have. So we're projecting a $6,800 increase as compared to where we started the year. Food services, this again, this is the money that we receive from, from parents paying for the food lunch services. We're actually projecting a decrease there, there's actually less students purchasing lunches than had been expected, again, when we forecasted. So in, in total, the change forecast to income is an increase of about $484,000. So now I'm going to jump down to the expense line items. Salaries, we have re-forecasted salaries, and we're bringing that expense down by about $474,000. That is due to positions that have not yet been filled, based on what we had forecasted at the beginning of the year. In addition, the payroll taxes and fringe line, that is in direct correlation. If you have less salaries, you have less payroll taxes and fringe. So that has come down above $200,000. And, let's see, professional development, we had originally forecasted $105,000 this year, but that's been brought down to 75,000 because there was a particular event that we're not expecting to take place this school year for professional development. It was the character development, and the character development program was not implemented this year. Again, you jumped on to the expense line item for food services. If there's less kids purchasing food services, then the expense falls as well. And that's directly correlated to the food services above. The other operating, that has gone up a little bit because of some temporary help that we brought on this year that we were not expecting. And last but not least, depreciation expenses up as well. So I'm not exactly sure what that relates to, what additional things we purchased, I would have to find out. But based on the purchases we thought we were going to make versus what we did make, the total is higher, therefore, the depreciation is higher.
I think that was from a couple of months ago, I think that was the additional Chromebooks to, to implement the new part of the new MCA.
So it was the additional Chromebooks. So when you get down to it, in total, again, from where I started, we are now looking at a surplus for this school year as opposed to where we started at the beginning of the year, which we were expecting to end the year in a deficit situation.
So essentially, the, the two big things are, we had $500,000 more in income, so 507.
Correct.
And then 6,000, $6,000, 677,000 to be specific, less than projected salaries and payroll taxes. And so that explains the swing of essentially 1.17...
Million dollars.
Million dollars.
Correct.
So Pauline, this begs the question of an item that we had talked about potentially discussing at one of our strategic planning meetings, and what I think we need to get to the list, right? Which is, we have, yeah, we have a lot of money in savings, right? We've had inconsistent recommendations from the auditor around what's the right amount. At the last meeting, they said three to four months, watched the video from two years ago, it was eight months to 10 months. It's probably time for us to say, okay, let's, let's pick what we think is responsible, and then we'll understand if we have money to spend to invest further in the school, what we want to do. But it's probably time, right? Because it's, it's time.
Yeah.
So this is an income sheet, obviously, rather than a balance sheet, and we did decide to invest additional monies this year. So it's not as though we haven't taken steps, we did...
We, we did, we did, but it was, but the board was not united in terms of kind of our policy and approach, right? So we have, we have...
Wasn't united, but we did invest more, I guess is my point.
So the board agreed to do that, to have a deficit spend this year, it turned out to be, you know, a $900,000 positive variable.
We were awfully intuitive about having that deficit spent.
I, all I'm saying is, it's time, if we were running a business, Ken, we would need to figure out, like, what is the... We want to have six months of money in savings, and then we want to have other money that we think we can spend responsibly. I just think it's time for us to do that.
So just to confirm, and I completely agree, we need that discussion. With, with this surplus, what do we anticipate our reserves to be in terms of number of months? Do we have a sense of that?
I don't have that at my fingertips. Tom would know probably off the top of his head, but I, I don't have that number in front of me.
I, I think it's around seven, we'd be up around seven and a half months now.
And to Mike's point, that we've had inconsistent recommendations on how many months, and we have been pretty, we have had, we haven't taken the highest recommendation, but on the higher scale.
Very conservative.
So, and there's reasons for that in terms of the future of the school and things.
I tend to lean on the conservative side, but it's still, there's a number, right? It doesn't matter, we've decided seven or eight months, it's still, it answers the questions that people are going to ask.
And we have a max as well, right?
We do have a...
We have a max that we can't exceed.
Right. We have a max that we can't exceed, except that if you specifically allocate a portion of that to capital expenditures, that doesn't count towards the max.
Okay.
So if you actually put it aside into, say, a building fund, that no longer counts.
That no longer counts, that, yeah, reserve.
And just to close on that, so that's, there's strategy in there that goes to fundraising, right? And so it all, it all comes together.
All comes together, yeah.
So I'd love to get that as a formal item in the next couple of meetings.
Okay, got it. Add it to mine to do after the reserves. Any other questions for Lucy on the budget?
Great job, Lucy.
Yay, Lucy.
Thank you, Lucy.
Hey, Lucy.
You're welcome.
Tom has numbers like that.
You don't quite have the same voice as Tom.
Yeah, Tom never gave us a number with a $1,000 surplus.
I don't do this either.
That's videotaped, too, that's what happens during, don't show up. Okay. Fundraising and development, actually, it's no longer fundraising and development, you know what the name of your committee is, Development.
Wow!
We've been calling this the wrong thing since the Bylaws work group.
Well, that's good news. So we met last night, as a matter of fact, and talked about two things, talked about alumni, the alumni program, and the annual campaign. On the alumni program, just to kind of reiterate what current efforts are, so we held the Alpha Class reunion in November with a 50% attendance rate, which is a really good number. They've, Back to the Future is continuing, they expand, have expanded it this year to include a promotional video and hand-signed photo, thank, photo, postcard, thank you cards to the alumni who participated in that. So just a really nice, really classy, high-touch thank you that they're doing, and a great promotion there. Continue, our alumni continue to get hand-signed birthday cards.
And they are making an impact, that was actually brought up this morning at the coffee, a couple of the parents mentioned it, and it, it's meaningful.
And, great. Really, it blows me away every time I see, wow, we do that?
Yeah.
No one does that, that's great. This year also, and this is mostly Maureen Evans is doing, was the staff person driving most of this, introducing an alumni notes section of the website. And she's been kind of trying to extract alumni notes from people so they can put stuff there. She's right now looking at converting that into a newsletter, so the alumni don't have to come to the site, but even more important, so we get real current contact information for the alumni as they sign on, and then we can understand kind of how we're communicating with them, and if they're opening their emails, click-throughs and all that kind of stuff. Couple of things under consideration. One is repeating the reunion again next year with an eye towards perhaps institutionalizing it, is that the five-year, is it, the school will go ahead and run the five-year reunion, or will subsidize it? You know, until such time as there's an alumni association that's robust enough to handle it, but it was such a success this year. The beta class is next year, it was cheap, people loved it, it was really good. Talking about adding a drop-in lunch in May, which I think, Dr. Lewis, is going to be the subject of your upcoming meeting with Maureen and Mike, so that bring, inviting the college-age alumni back after they get out of, they, they get out of school before AMSA ends, so they can come visit, see their favorite teachers, that kind of thing. And one strategic initiative, which gets sort of towards the parent thing, although not as explicitly, I was very glad to hear what you, what you said about that, because alumni parents are just, you know, a terrific resource. The new strategic thought is to see if long-term, we can explore the possibility of facilitating summer jobs and internships for AMSA alumni who are in college. And that helps us in, the value add to that is tremendous if we can do it. For parents, their kids get jobs, continue a relationship with AMSA. Also, parents will make sure that the kids get the mail, because it's about the kids getting jobs, and they'll be reinforcing those, those messages. For the alumni themselves, they're getting jobs and internships, and every, one of these things strengthens the relationship with AMSA. And for the companies, it gives them the pipeline that they're looking for, it solves the "we can't have minors on our site" problem for them. And these, and I think giving them pipeline and giving them interns in an accessible way is a major get for, for hiring companies. And it will also, you know, give us those relationships, the philanthrop, possibilities of relationships with the companies, and I think it will really ground us and put us in a unique place. We struggled with, like, as a high school alumni group, what are you going to do? You're going to have networking for job seekers? Well, no, they'll go to the college alumni group for that. You know, what can you do that's unique? And this summer job for college-age alumni could be really significant.
I, like I just said, I think it's a fantastic idea, if, if we can make it work. Because I, I think it's, it's like really investing, well, it's, you, you shared all the benefits, but even just kind of from a development perspective, you're planting seeds that will bear fruit over the long term. And if we think about this from a long-term perspective, that's just like, you're just getting that affinity and that connectivity all that tighter with us, so. That's, that's a great idea.
And I think the numbers are still small enough that it's manageable to get it started.
I'll just say that through the years I've been in contact with different alumni since the Alpha Class, and many of them have wondered if they would simply lose contact with AMSA, they very much wanted to maintain AMSA as part of their life, and they felt they would have something to offer if not at that moment, in the future. And I find what you've set out to be rather brilliant in getting this started.
We've been stumped by, for a long time on that, and that was a, it was one of the better moments of the week. And we're going to be talking to you about the details of all of this when she and Mike meet.
Yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
What happened with the seeds of an alumni association?
So...
How the class numbers were?
There wasn't enough energy to carry it forward.
Okay.
And so they worked with, so the alumni who drove the reunion kind of ran out of steam once the reunion was done.
Okay.
And at this point, unless we want to invest a lot in it, if the energy's not coming from there, you're not going to get it. It's like pushing on a rope to...
I think a problem is that the Alpha and Beta classes are just fairly recent college grads.
Right.
I get the impression that they, you know, they're forging their way in a career, but they want to have alumni union, and they, they sort of gauge that perhaps when they are in their late-ish twenties is when this can really start to crystallize. So it's, I think, only a temporary hold on this.
Yeah. I, it's, while it seems like it's easy and obvious, getting people to click, getting people to give you their updated email address, you know, it's not as easy to do as we think it will be. it will be. Well, that's why I think your idea of, of the social activities, the professional networking and so forth, the sort of multimode approach to that, gathering, you know, contact information, using that to maintain contact, I think all that is an important part of doing it. You know, undoubtedly, these first few years, it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to fall on a few people, perhaps even in the administration or, you know, elsewhere to sort of, you know, keep it going, you know, with the communications function, you know, taking, you know, taking that up, but it'll pay off in the long term. And the strategic inclusion of the parents.
I think that's-
That's, that's no, that, and I think that will be.
Yeah, that is really good, yeah. So how would this sort of summer job thing, or is the idea to go, to reach out to the AMPSA community, like families, people?
So here's one way it could work, is that we would-
Companies?
Yeah, we start calling around the companies, use AMPSA connections first, go to Thermo, use board connections.
Yep.
And get the companies identified. And then you could do any number of things, but one would be a mailing or a series of mailings and emailings with a job fair kind of event, one thing you could do. You could combine it with some kind of a social thing. You could, so you could just do Matchmaker, you could do something that's a little more hands-on in terms of, you know, picking, somehow feeding that back. If you're working on corporate relationships, like with GE Life Sciences, you know, and they take four or five alumni, maybe then the, they want to feature that somehow in the GE- AMPSA relationship during the next year? Maybe yes, maybe no. So there's, there's a lot of details to be worked out, and they, and some of them could be troublesome, but, you know, I think it's worth putting, it's worth, worth investing in. I, I think there's no shortage of organizations that would love to have a ready source of smart, prepared students who've gone through, gone on to college, are coming back during the summer, and giving that, you know, using those opportunities over the summers to, for those corporations to build relationship. That's certainly how at Lincoln, we do, I'm sure, you know, you guys want to do the same thing. And, you know, you use those summers in order to sort of, for the student to assess whether that's a place I want to work, and for the company to say, hey, you know, we've got a, you know, we've got ready, you know, we know, this person's a known, you know, known quantity, and, you know, we like what we're seeing, so. And then if it works after we get it going for a couple of years, then we can name it, we can name a part of it, the Thermo Fellowship.
Right. I like it. I like it.
To the naming. In addition to the salary they're going to pay the kids.
Of course. Done. I, I run the intern program at Thermo Fisher, so absolutely. In fact, I promised Padgett where he's going to start a high school internship program, we're going to have an AMPSA high school student in that summer, so.
Mike's-
I'm awful, I think it's a great, I'm trying to sneak quiet, I think it's a great idea.
Mike's letting me intern at Thermo Fisher.
It's a great idea, absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful. Okay, that was half of your update, because you said two.
Oh, shoot, yeah, right, sorry.
Annual give it.
So annual give it. So, boy, it feels so different than it did just a couple of months ago to them.
What's that?
Hmm?
What's that?
You know, I don't know, is it, is it the water? So what the committee is recommending is that we run, that we run April to June. What we'd like to do is keep the basic structure in place, which is a series of communications, a series of website postings and publications, student thank you calls to all donors, student solicitation calls, you know, a separate solicitation to the board and all that stuff. What we want to make changes to, what we're suggesting, is that we significantly increase the celebratory aspect of it. New campaign for a new day, we'll figure out what to call it, but it's really all about the new day, and to make it about more than money, so that we can solicit, so that we can solicit students, and we can solicit families, and we can solicit teachers. And this is where it might dovetail with some of the strategic input gathering, is that you can, you know, support AMPSA in the new day. You can do it by giving us an idea, click here, by asking us a question, by making a suggestion, by making a financial contribution. Then you can have kids, you can have, like, and if you have kids doing it, and, you know, doing lots of fun activities with it, and creating a lot of buzz, and they go home, the parents know we prefer a check to an idea from them, you know, that'll, that will help there. And to really increase the promotional activities, which is, to some degree, will be picking up things they used to do, where they have done different times in the past, so if, I remember, I'm from my years at United Way, if you go to one company during the United Way campaign, you know, Draper Lab, their, you know, the CEO is in a dunk tank at a lunch hour, they're doing a lot of carnivals, they're doing a lot of high-visibility stuff, to look at those kinds of things that we could do within the limits of what's possible in a school day.
Are you suggesting we could talk to-
Dr. Lewis in the dunk tank?
Let's do it, I'm ready.
All right, you said it on TV. So, that's kind of what we're thinking, and we're thinking to launch in April. Maureen is actually drafting some of this into, you know, these, these, you know, kind of random list of ideas that we have into a draft, draft program.
April through the end of the school year, basically.
Yeah. And just to really make it fun, and really get everybody involved, and hopefully raise a lot of money, which I think will take care of itself over time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, I have two things that I wanted to make a note of. We do have coming up, if people have not RSVP'd to Sarah, Dees is coming back for their site visit on April 13th, and we do, board members do need to meet with Dees for part of that. This is part of looking at our charter renewal conditions, that we have an RSVP to Sarah, please do, but I think you have a couple of people, right? So, good.
Only a couple?
We can only have a couple.
We can only have a couple?
Yeah, we can't have five, yeah. Less than a couple.
Yeah. Did I reply? No?
You may have.
Okay, it's a yes.
I was trying to put down that I know Ben did.
Sorry, yeah, it's a yes, I thought I had, but-
Great, so we have, yeah, okay, good. Just wanted to make a note that we do have a board team for Saturday night's trivia night. Board members will be there. I think that's the first time the board's, like, done a team on anything like that, but I think that's also the first time that communities had something like that, that board members could be a part of, so. That's going to happen.
It may be the last time, depending on how well we equip ourselves.
You, you don't have, you can recruit ringers. We'll take anybody who'll pay us.
Just make sure you DVR the QuizBowl that night.
Oh, no.
Is this going to be telecast live?
I hope not. Not if you want me to dress up. Okay. And then one final question that I had was for Dr. Lewis, was is there a plan for the school calendar for next year? Because that's actually something that I-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh.
We have one.
The school calendar is shelved. Shelled, yes. That we-
Okay, 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 if there's something, that's good, all right.
You have it. I can access that.
You have it completely ready?
The shell, the shell is ready.
Which is actually all we need to approve. Like, literally, we have to prove, like, sort of the outlines of, to make sure it's 180 days.
It's the last one.
Or more.
Or more, yeah, a minimum of.
So who did I send it to?
Holidays or?
Yeah.
You know what, I actually have a-
You don't have to answer.
We, we can also do this next month, but-
Yeah. Hope, we really want to be able to get requests in on it so that it can be.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's just downloading.
Oh, all right.
They use computers if they have to.
Do we have one?
If we use computers, it'll be faster. It's a good thing we have IT support here, too.
I, I have it.
Oh, good. Oh, super.
Send it to Rick. I don't think I have Rick, I only have Paul.
Oh, well, that works too, great.
It's iPhoneized. Are you actually on the internet, so you're able to get?
Talk about being responsive.
See you for a kiss.
Has it been sent out? Has it been sent out yet?
It was sent to you.
Okay.
He's still on AOL.
I have kids who don't know what AOL is.
Really?
Because it's ancient.
I don't think my kids know what AOL is.
Really? I don't. Pauline, there are a lot of things on this, the major thing that you're just getting the lesson.
We just need the shell, yeah.
The, for, it's vacations, it's first, last.
Right, vacations, first, last day, and holidays.
Making sure that time on learning.
Yeah.
Would we go on screen?
Yeah.
That's what he's trying to do.
Wow, it should have asked that first. How are we doing on time? How is this meeting, guys?
We're doing good. We're right on time.
When we go into executive session, Allison is actually going to call in, but we may be in there before she's ready to call in. Oh, look at that.
Voila.
Just have to get it to be scaled, right?
That's because he has the, you know.
Which, I don't know, just happening.
So Pauline, I always, so what are we voting on? We're voting on the fact that the calendar meets the requirements.
Can people see that, or is that too-
No, that, you've got to go a little bigger.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Just to make sure that this is the calendar for next year, so they can roll it out, you know, pretty soon.
It's really the starting day, the ending day, making sure there's be enough scenes in there.
Out of our seven.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
So, just a few things that you might notice. We still have, there's two weeks of, there's actually 17 days, I believe, around-
Oh, Christmas.
The December holiday, so I think folks like that.
It's a great day, yeah.
Provides a nice break for everybody. There is one full day PD, which I think gives an opportunity to do a little bit more PD in depth, and then the other days, I believe there are five half-days. And I believe the end day is June 15th, or June 22nd with five snow days. So if you look in the top, the top right corner there, you can see the start date, I think, is the 28th of August.
Okay, yeah. The list of scrapers.
You can see in the top right corner there, kind of the list of things that this schedule does, so one full day PD, half-day PDs to be determined, five in total, a half-day before Thanksgiving, we're trying to figure out a way to have a full day, but didn't quite work out. So we do have two weeks of December vacation, which I think is a nice refreshment for everybody. Last day for seniors, May 30th, last day of school, June 15th, and June 22nd with five snow days.
And why half-days instead of full-days for PD?
The experience of PDs in the past, I don't think has been very positive, and a lot of experiences, you know, eight, eight hours of sitting in a chair and kind of rather mind-numbing PD. So we really want to change that, we want to make PD, our in-school PD, very, very effective. So we'll have one full day of PD, and I know Ellen has some ideas, I've got some ideas about how to have a really good, fantastic full-day PD, where teachers feel really, really excited about having a full-day PD. And then half-day PDs, where hopefully departments have some flexibility, what they want to do. We just, this past week, we invited all departments to get out of AMPSA and to go do things of interest to them, be it Explorer Museum, or whatnot, just get, get out of the school and go see things of interest to you. So the history department went out, and we went to the World War II Museum and ate it, which was fantastic. So just trying to do some different things for PD. So we have one full day, but we can do a lot in that one full day, and then half-days, which I think is a great time for departments to go do some, some different things.
Thank you.
As a teacher, just, we concentrate, I mean, full-day PDs after three, four hours, it's just hard to keep concentrating. We have found that we get much more out of three good hours than seven, eight bad hours.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion, Pauline?
So, yes, I'm looking for a motion.
Both approve the calendar.
I seconded, okay.
Who made the, who made the motion?
Ken made the motion, Liz seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. There we go, motion passed unanimously. All right, thank you, good stuff. So, agenda topics for our next meeting, are there any in particular, or we'll have a standard? Are we doing the budget?
Is the budget next month?
Financial.
Oh, yes. The, um, we are not 100% sure if the budget will be ready, right?
Okay.
It's probably going to be ready, but we will, you know, it's probably 90% that it will be ready.
The only reason why I pushed to get that financial thing on the budget next month is-
Which you want it with this whole discussion.
And it's ahead of fundraising.
Fundraising.
And actually, it did come up in the committee, too, you know, even in the new era of good feeling, that they felt like we wanted to have an articulation for what we were going to use the money for.
Right, so we'll kind of compartmentalize and, with a transparent line, we'll know what we're doing.
Okay, so is the capital reserve have the-
Okay. If there's nothing else that we will go into, or I guess I'll entertain a motion, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and strategies for negotiating with representative personnel.
Not to return.
Not to return.
So moved.
Okay, Ken seconded, and Liz?
Oh.
You guys scooped on that. Yep. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we're going to have, we're going to invite Dr. Lewis to join us, and just also for the record, we will be calling Allison Collins to lead any executive session.